You have to have green.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Take up case number... Forty-three oh seven.
Motion to open case number forty-three oh seven.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to waive the reading of the abutters and to take the answers to question eight is written.
Should I read this out?
Second.
Not yet.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. Public hearing will be held in the town hall conference room, the room three oh one, third floor, Ten Pearl Street, May second, two thousand twenty-four, seven thirty P. M. petitioner of the HSL Stoughton LLC represented by Barry, Attorney Barry S. Cremmons, Barry Akcremmons. Sorry about that. It's a little dark over here. For comprehensive permit under the Massachusetts state laws, Chapter four, forty B, Section twenty through twenty-three, in the Town of Stoughton Zoning Board of Appeals Rules and Regulations governing comprehensive permits adopted July sixteenth, nineteen ninety-eight in order to construct two hundred units of affordable senior housing located at three thirty-eight Canton Street, further identified on assesses plan forty-three, lot three, in an RC zone in Stoughton. Any person desiring to be heard or receive further notice concerning this petition as provided by the general rules of the zoning board of appeal should file a written request containing his or her name with an address with the board. Petitioner or his representative or any other person desiring to be heard in this matter should appear at time and place designated. Chairman, Ebro Chairman was in the Patriot Ledger, April seventeenth and April twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-four. I have a piece of correspondence from Mr. Cremmons. The chairman of Ebro and members of the Honorable Zoning Board of Appeals, please be advised the undersigned represents HSL Stoughton LLC and Massachusetts Limited Liability Company with the address of twelve hundred Center Street, Rosendale, Mass., Oak two one three one regarding its application for comprehensive permit under the Massachusetts general laws, Chapter forty B, Section twenty through twenty-three, and the Town of Stoughton Zoning Board of Appeals. Rules and regulations governing comprehensive permits adopted July sixteenth, nineteen ninety-eight in order to construct two hundred units of affordable senior housing at the above referenced location located in a residential suburban RC zoning district. Accordingly enclosed, please find the comprehensive permits application, the following items to support the application, which also can be accessed electronically by means of following link, HTPPS Hebrew Senior Life Share File Comp forty B. And it goes on, we have a cover letter from the Hebrew Senior Life Zoning Board of Appeals, March twenty-second, twenty twenty-four, and a project overview and a list of attachments. Table of contents for the comprehensive permit application includes the application for the comprehensive permit plan dated March thirteenth, two thousand twenty-four. Existing conditions, narrative, design narrative, including cable, project assets, substantially narrative, preliminary architectural drawings, including preliminary site development plans and utilities plans, project eligibility letter from the extension, the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities, the LLC dated March twentieth, two thousand twenty-four, list of requested project waivers, certified list of abutters, copy of project review check number one nine one seven nine from Hebrew Senior Life payable to the Town of Stoughton in the amount of twenty-one thousand one hundred and seventy-six dollars for the project review for previously submitted. Minus of a lien certificate dated January twenty-six, two thousand twenty-four, letter of support from the Select Board, the Community Preservation Committee dated October seventeenth, two thousand twenty-three. One copy of the storm water management report also submitted electronically, one copy of traffic study and parking report dated December, two thousand twenty-three submitted electronically. Evidence of the site control, including purchase and sale agreement dated March fourteenth, two thousand twenty-four, certificate of good standing from the Secretary of State's office for HSL Holding Company LLC dated March eighth, two thousand twenty-four, corrective quick claim deed to HSL Housing Holding Company LLC dated March thirteenth, two thousand twenty-four, and recorded in the Norfolk County Registry of Deeds in Book forty-one sixty-seven seven, page two hundred and sixty-six, in relationship of deed holder to comprehensive permit applicant, financial disclosures, including project pro forma, project development plans dated February sixteenth, two thousand twenty-four, hot check number one thirty-four payable to the Town of Stoughton in the amount of four hundred and eight dollars and forty-three cents for the certified list of abutters, and draft of opposed legal notice for the public hearing of the application. As indicated in the proposed legal notice kindly scheduled public hearing on the application board's meeting of May second, two thousand twenty-four, please also advise the undersigned if there are any changes needed to the proposed legal notice for the public hearing, so I will have an opportunity to prepare the revised legal notice and forward it to you in time for to be submitted to a newspaper publication on April seventeenth, April twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-four. Once you have approved the proposed legal notice, I will email a copy to you and submit to Patriot Ledger for publication. In the meantime, if there's any additional information you need, or if you have any questions regarding the application, please do not hesitate to contact me. Thank you for your cooperation. Gary Akcremmons, Esquire.
This is... Mr. Chairman, this is Bill Roth, Town Planner. You don't, they've submitted the necessary application and so with the cover letters and in-depth narrative that was all given to you. So you don't need to read their entire narrative. Okay. You actually, you didn't even need to read the first thing, but you've listed everything that they've submitted, and then everything that's in your packet is what Mr. Cremmons referenced, so. Yes. We have Attorney Winter with us, Brian.
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me okay?
Kind of.
You getting this? Hold on. All right, well...
Yes, we can hear you now.
All right, terrific. So, good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, Brian Winter, Town Counsel. I'm happy to follow your lead on how you'd like to proceed. If I heard, I believe I heard, I mentioned at the safe harbor. You're welcome to take that up, you know, later in the meeting if you see fit to. You haven't heard any kind of presentation from the applicant or any sort of introductory remarks. You may want to handle that first, but if you'd like me to address the safe harbor issue now, I'm happy to do that as well. So I leave it to you.
You want to do the safe harbor thing now? Wait.
What's the safe harbor?
They're going to explain it.
Brian, I guess the chairman said he'd like to do the, start off with the safe harbor, please.
Okay, and my apologies, everyone. I hope you can hear me clearly. I'm not hearing you very clearly, so Bill, if you don't mind giving me a few cues along the way, just so I don't miss anything.
Okay, we can, can you hear me?
I can hear you very clearly, and I don't, I don't know if it's a, at any rate.
The board members, please, you need to see how close I am to talking the microphone so you can hear their feedback whenever you talk. Go ahead, Brian.
So let me just mention a few things. You've heard the term "safe harbor," and so this is a term that is part of the forty B regulations, and so there is a CMR, Code of Massachusetts Regulations, seven sixty CMR fifty-six, which sets forth, in addition to some of the provisions of the statute, some additional safe harbors, one of these is the one that I want to reference, which is your ten percent, the statutory minimum for creation of SHI units. So what is a safe harbor? A safe harbor is a provision that you can invoke. You have to invoke it. It's not passive. You need to claim it, and if you claim it, then the board has a couple of options. What it does is it would deem the decision of the board that it ultimately reaches to be quote-unquote "consistent with local needs," and that means you could potentially deny or condition the project, and it would be deemed consistent with local needs if there was a subsequent appeal. So why does that matter? It matters for two reasons. One is the normal forty B standard of review, if there's a denial or a challenge to your decision. The burden is on the applicant, excuse me, the burden would be on us to prove that it's inconsistent with local needs. If you claim the safe harbor, it's actually reversed, and so we, the board, could potentially condition or maybe even deny a project, and the HAC in reviewing that would initially presume that it is consistent with local needs, and the applicant would have the burden, meaning it's very difficult to challenge that on appeal. So there aren't many procedural advantages to a zoning board with hearing a forty B, and this is one of them, and so it's very customary for a board, if there is a safe harbor available, to invoke that safe harbor. Now, that doesn't mean you don't proceed with a hearing. You can invoke and stop the process, but you can also invoke and continue. You can continue to hear the project, and you can proceed on the merits of the application, and that would give the applicant, you know, two choices. They can, they can challenge the invocation of the safe harbor, or they can proceed with a hearing. So I want you to understand that while we recommend this, in every case, that if there's a safe harbor available, you invoke it because you need to preserve your rights as you go forward. It doesn't mean that it stops the process or that it prevents you from approving the project. You can still absolutely approve this project or condition it or handle it as you normally would in due course. So there's a process for invoking it, and that's why I asked if it would be okay if I attended tonight, because you only have fifteen days from the opening of the public hearing to do so. You have to do so in writing. You'll have to, upon a motion, take a vote whether or not to invoke it. You have to send notice to the applicant, and you have to copy what used to be known as DHCD, now known as the EOLHC, excuse me. And so we provide that notice. Your staff and myself would prepare that, and you could have the chair sign it, and we only have fifteen days to do that, or it's lost. The applicant has a chance to respond to that. They have fifteen days to challenge it. They don't have to challenge it. We can just proceed with a hearing. If there is a challenge, it can stay here one hundred and eighty days while it's being reviewed by the state. If it's not challenged, we proceed in the regular course. So now is the time to consider that and to make a decision. The one I'm referring to you, there are a number of safe harbors, and I'm not going to get into the minutia of all the different ones, because we get into, you know, all the complexities of the forty B regulations and a whole lot of acronyms that we don't need to talk about tonight. But the statutory minimum of ten percent is certainly one that you should consider because Stoughton is way beyond that. In fact, I actually, I had it in front of me a second ago, but I believe it was, what, eleven point two on the latest SHI? And so you're well within that safe harbor, and so the town has some protections as to how it proceeds on forty B applications. And so I would ask you to consider that. If the board is inclined to do one of those three things, to invoke it and continue the hearing, would be one of them, and that's the one I recommend, then you would have to make a motion to do so and to instruct myself with the town planner to prepare a suitable notice and authorize the chair to sign that, alerting the state as well as the applicant that that was your decision to do so. So let me stop there and ask if anybody has any, any questions on that.
Actually, the only question I would have...
Gary, you got to pull it close to you.
Has this, is this, any of this have an effect on the MBTA new law?
No.
Okay. So in that case, do we...
I think it was eleven point oh six, excuse me.
Yes, we're at eleven point oh six.
Yes.
I'm in favor of invoking the safe harbor.
Absolutely.
I can make a motion if you want.
Yes.
So I'll make a motion that we invoke the safe harbor provision under seven sixty CMR fifty-six with regard to the Town of Stoughton being over its ten percent threshold for affordable housing and that we continue with the public hearing on the matter pending before us case number forty-three oh seven, that the chairman be authorized to sign on behalf of the board any paperwork that's prepared for it, and that all paperwork be sent to the applicant and to the appropriate state agencies.
Second.
Aye.
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 Mr. Roth, you'll write that up, or Brian will write that up?
Yes, sir.
Yes, we'll work together, and we'll provide that to your chair in the regular course. And I'm going to stay on the meeting, so if there's any further questions on other issues, I'm happy to provide any support the board may ask for. We'll provide as much or as little as you desire. So I will be here, but I'll turn my microphone off for the time being. Thank you.
Thank you. So, Mr. Chairman, at this time, I would recommend that you allow the applicant to make their presentation, and then after that, then we as staff can make some presentations and recommendations on procedural matters, on how we recommend proceeding with the application, if that's okay with you.
Okay. Mr. Cremmons.
Good evening, I guess not that close. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, Attorney Barry Akcremmons of nine oh nine Washington Street in Stoughton, here on behalf of the applicant, Hebrew Senior Life. Sometimes you'll hear in some of the correspondents, the client referred to as HSL. HSL stands for Hebrew Senior Life. So they are the applicant in this application for a comprehensive permit. You see with me here at the table several members of our project team who will be addressing the board tonight momentarily. There were also members of the project team online who could not be here personally tonight but are logged in via Google Meets and are online to address the board. I thank the board for going through a very lengthy application. There's a reason it's called a comprehensive permit. It is very comprehensive, so I thank the board, I thank the staff for working with us as this process has proceeded. I want to just mention very briefly procedurally where we are at and what permits this project is going to need from the town. Certainly, first and foremost, is the comprehensive permit under Chapter forty B from this board, which we hope and have full faith that when this process is over, the board will vote to grant the comprehensive permit. We are not expecting that, however, to happen tonight. We fully expect that this matter, this hearing will be continued, perhaps even more than once. Again, comprehensive permits, the nature of which are such that, as you all know, it takes a little bit more time than a normal special permit or variance application to work through because you're serving in sort of a multi-board capacity. With the exception of the Conservation Commission, all jurisdiction falls to this board to review the application and issue the comprehensive permit. I also want to mention for the record that we do not have an objection, certainly to the board invoking the safe harbor under the regulations, as was identified by Attorney Winter. I would, however, want to go on record as saying we reserve our rights to confirm, it's my understanding, you know, the board and we've all been operating on the premise that the town's subsidized housing inventory is, in fact, over the ten percent, a little over eleven percent. As you folks know, you know, there's a mathematical formula in determining that percentage, and it's affected by how many total units of housing are in the town divided by how many affordable housing units are in the town. I don't know when that information was last updated with the, again, I apologize if I slip and call it DHCD, but with the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities, as it's now known, but subject to confirming that the town is, in fact, above the ten percent, we certainly have no objection and totally understand why the town would want to invoke the safe harbor exception. As I mentioned, several people are here tonight. We're going to talk about the site. We're going to talk about the building, buildings, which I think are going to be something the town will ultimately be very proud of and will be able to point to as an example of the town stepping up and frankly doing the right thing. We're going to hear from the folks from Hebrew Senior Life who can talk about their mission and what they are all about and why they have chosen this particular site to propose this project and why they are excited about moving forward with constructing this in Stoughton. We also have our traffic engineer online. I understand from correspondence that was submitted by Mr. Roth and Mr. Horstfall that the sense is that obviously the traffic report will go out for peer review. We certainly understand that and do not have any objection to that. Notwithstanding that, our traffic engineer is, is online here tonight as well. We brought the full team with us tonight, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, so that we can make a thorough presentation to the board tonight. This obviously is the night that the matter was scheduled for, but as I said, we realize that it's not going to be concluded tonight. What I'd like to just spend a couple of more minutes on, if I may, is to address what I see as the main overriding issue with this project, and I'd kind of like to take off my attorney hat and put on my hat as, as chairman of the Stoughton Housing Authority. As many of you know, I've served on the Stoughton Housing Authority for over twenty-five years, last several years as chairman. I was previously the housing authority's representative to the Community Preservation Committee. There is, and I think everyone would recognize this, there is an overriding need for affordable senior housing in this community. If any of you have had any experience yourselves or with loved ones dealing with the housing authority, and I'm biased, but I think we do a very good job with the applications that we get, unfortunately, we get way more applications than we have units to house people. These are folks who have lived in the community for years, have grown up in the community, and want to stay in the community. Typically, however, either they've become cost burdened by the cost of maintaining their homes. Oftentimes, it's a surviving spouse after a first spouse has passed, but they want to stay in the community. Typically, their families are in the community. We have, by last estimates, approximately three thousand six hundred folks on our waitlist, combination of our state and our federal waitlist, looking for housing. I would hate to tell you how long, unfortunately, that it does take for an application to move to the top of the list. These units do not typically turn over frequently. Folks live in these units for many years. They often have this as their last residence. You may recall, we had a fire several years ago at the complex on Capen Street, Fort Capen Street, that's referred to as Rose Forte, where sixty-nine residents were displaced due to a fire from a lightning strike in the middle of the night. Fortunately, nobody was hurt as a result of that fire, which was in and of itself a minor miracle considering the amount of people involved in the time of day when this fire occurred. We were able to rebuild, first, we had to find temporary housing for those folks. We then were able to rebuild the property at Fort Capen Street, and probably, I'd say about eighty to eighty-five percent of the original tenants moved back into that property. Others who had relocated with family members decided to stay with family members, but about eighty to eighty-five percent of our original residents moved back into that complex. I cannot think of a project, and you folks know I'm before you quite often, I cannot think of a project, certainly that either I have been involved with personally or I have been aware of, that meets a need in this town more so than this project does. We've, you know, I've had plenty of applications for other types of businesses and residences. Certainly, you know, each of them fulfills a need for the particular applicant, but I cannot think of a project that meets a need that has been identified for years in our town's master plan, in our town's housing plan, in the information I just alluded to, regarding the waitlist with the Stoughton Housing Authority, and meets a need for... to, regarding the waitlist with the Stoughton Housing Authority, and meets a need for the residents of the town of Stoughton. Now, you'll hear mention tonight about local preferences, which we are going to provide. I don't want to get into right now the details of that, but rather than to say, this is a project that is going to serve the needs of many of Stoughton's most vulnerable citizens. The age that we've set for the project is 62 or over. So I guess technically I could apply, but the age at most of the Hebrew Senior Life campuses, and you'll hear mention of that as well, tends to be closer than to 80 years of age, but the minimum age is 62 or over. But as I said, typically, the residents are going to be older than 62. But they are folks who, as I said, live in the town, have grown up in the town, want to stay in the town, and this is a means that you folks have available to you to meet that need. Now, are 200 units of affordable senior housing going to solve the problem with our waitlist and others? No. Are there still going to be people on a waitlist? Absolutely. But these 200 units are going to go a long way towards addressing that dire need that this town has. And I would suggest to you that notwithstanding the local preference, the experience is such, and if you just think of it anecdotally, most of the applicants are going to come from, if not Stoughton, then, you know, the surrounding area. If, you know, if I grew up, as I did, here in the town, you know, I'm not going to apply for housing out in North Hampton. You know, folks want to stay in the area because this is where their families are. And so this is why this project is going to address a need for our Stoughton seniors that otherwise is not being met. I mentioned the fact that I served as the Housing Authority's representative to the Community Preservation Committee. During my time on that board, unfortunately, we only had one housing project of any significance go forward, but when I say go forward, applied for funding from the CPC, got approved of funding from the CPC, but unfortunately was not able to go forward. Other than that, and other than some things that were done during COVID with emergency shelter, the CPC unfortunately has not had an application before it that it could act on to provide for community housing, one of the four categories under the Community Preservation Act. And as a result of that, the CPC voted unanimously to support the funding request for this project. And that funding request is going to go to town meeting starting next week. The town meeting starts next week. We're not sure when we will be reached, but that funding request is going to go before town meeting next week. I trust, and as a former town meeting member myself, I trust that the town meeting members are also going to recognize the need for this type of housing in this town and will, in my opinion, will overwhelmingly support the article for funding, which is certainly a tremendous amount that the CPC has committed to this project, but represents, and the overall cost of the project, not to minimize it, but represents relatively small portion of the overall cost of the project. The other funding is going to come from state sources in other areas that, once again, are not important for our purposes tonight. But the CPC recognized that they have not had an opportunity to vote and approve a housing project previously. And this is the type of project that if I were still a member of the CPC, I would have been thrilled to have gotten behind. I'm just happy that I'm able to represent this client, this applicant, on this particular project. I don't want to take up any more of your time right now on this, but I just cannot stress enough and I cannot underscore enough, first and foremost, the need, number one. Second of all, the ability for this project to meet that need, number two, and to do so in a manner that will be a gem to this community, truly a gem to this community that people will be able to point to with pride and say that their loved one lives there or, you know, they've had experience with Hebrew Senior Life or things of that nature. So, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I thank you for indulging me in my slightly longer opening than I had anticipated, although I'm sure it comes as no surprise to any of you. With that, I would like to introduce Ms. Kim Brooks, who is the Chief Operating Officer of Hebrew Senior Life, to talk a little bit about Hebrew Senior Life, its mission, its vision for this project, and then we'll get into some of the more detailed matters with our engineer and our architect. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. So I will just give you a very brief overview of our organization. Also want to mention, my colleague Deb Morris is joining us via video tonight. She wasn't able to be here, but we both are here representing Hebrew Senior Life and happy to be here with the rest of the team. Thank you for your time tonight. As an organization, we are a nonprofit. We're one of the largest senior care organizations in New England. We serve about 4,500 older adults every day, and we do that across seven campuses in and around the Boston area. We have owned this parcel of land for a very long time in Stoughton, and I would say about a couple of years ago, we started having some conversations with town staff, with senior center, with the Housing Authority, and heard loud and clear the need for affordable senior housing here, which is very aligned with the work that we do and the growth that we are focused on. So we've been excited to work on that over the last couple of years. So the 4,500 seniors that we serve every day, as I mentioned, we do that across seven campuses. We're in a number of different businesses, but our mission and our focus is all older adults. So we have everything from facility-based care, long- and short-term care, to home and community-based services, home care, hospice, personal care in the home, and then independent living and assisted living. And our independent living is permanent housing. We do that both for market rate. We have market rate communities that are continuing care retirement communities. And then the one, the other sites of ours that look most similar to the project that we're proposing here in Stoughton are our four campuses of affordable, permanent senior housing. And our approach there is really embedding a lot of services into that housing to make sure that people can age successfully in community. And so we have most recently been focused on, we added 45 units to our campus in Randolph, so we have now 200 units of housing there in Randolph. We also fairly recently opened a new housing community in Dorchester in partnership with the CDC there. And again, all of these communities have, you know, fitness and wellness and social work staff and a number of supports and services, meeting the needs of the older adults that are moving into them. So we are really excited about the opportunity to possibly bring that model here to Stoughton and not only be able to provide those services to the people who live in the community that we're building, but also having community space that can be available to the broader population of Stoughton and partner up with the other services and supports that are already here to make sure that we make that available to all older adults in Stoughton. So again, thank you. That's just a brief overview of our organization, and we look forward to getting into the details of the project with you.
Thanks, Kim. Now, Mr. Chairman, if I may, we'll start to get into a little bit more about the project itself, and our first presenter in that regard is our civil engineer, Paula Thompson. So Paula, would you like to introduce yourself and make your presentation?
Paula Thompson from Bales &amp; Thomas. Hopefully, everyone can hear me. Yeah, perfect, Bill. Thank you. So the first exhibit we have up here on the board is the overall project site or ownership site is 25-acre site off Canton Street and Simpson Street. There is about 14 acres of wetland through the central, central portion of the site that is, was developed from old agricultural use and ditches that went through the property. So when we started looking at appropriate area of the site for the 200 senior units, we identified the northeast corner of the property as it had the least amount of potential wetland impacts, and it also had direct access to Canton Street and Simpson Street, which is to the east. So generally, this plan is north is up. So Canton Street is along the top section, and Simpson Street runs along the eastern property line. So that being identified, next slide, Bill. We, this is a zoomed-in version of that northeast corner, so Canton Street is at the top of the page and Simpson Street is on the side. We identified about five and a half acre property that we will be going before the planning board for an approval not required of that lot to cut it off for this development. And this area has about four acres of upland area and then just wetland fringes on it. So it was ideal for this development. So topography on site, you can see on the northeastern corner, this is the high point. This is the intersection of Canton Street and Simpson Street is pretty much the high point of the site. That's elevation 200 feet above sea level. And then the site falls to the west and to the south to the wetland line to about 178 feet. So we do have some topography to deal with across this site. Currently, the site is open field. It's revegetating with some oak and pine forests. We have areas on the site of an old foundation, nice stone retaining wall along the frontage. And then there's some areas towards the back, towards the wetland, actually, that are bituminous concrete, some spoil piles. There's invasive species of bittersweet and knotweed that are in that area. So we are, as part of this project, going to look at cleaning up a lot of those areas and the debris and tires and everything that are out there. Next slide. So these are some of the existing conditions on site. You can see in the lower left corner, the stone wall along the frontage. The third photograph there is the northeastern corner of the site, and that is, you know, revegetated, and we are looking to try to keep that corner and some of that vegetation. Next slide, Bill. These are some additional photographs of the site. You can see some of the spoil piles, debris, and bituminous concrete that are, that's on the site. Next slide.
We need to go to the next file, I think, Bill, sorry.
Perfect. Great. So this is the proposed development. This is the 200 units, so in white in the center of the site, that is 200 units of the senior affordable residential, and it will be constructed in two phases, and I'll let Philippe get into the details of the building after I finish with the site. So the site plan is proposed to have two access points off of Canton Street. The main access, you can see a loop driveway around the main access off of Canton, and that's a two-way driveway. And then just to the west of there, closer to the wetland line, is a one-way inn. That's a service driveway, and it accesses the trash room and loading area of the building to the west. And our third entry point is off of Simpson Street, and that's mainly residential access and access to a second service and trash area over on that western leg, the eastern leg of the building, sorry. And so the access onto Simpson is important because residents will be using Simpson Street. So we have on our plans that we're going to improve the site distance. So coming out of Simpson Street, it is hard to see in both directions, so we'll be clearing some overgrown vegetation, potentially reducing the height of that existing stone wall that's on Canton Street. What you see here for parking, we have 59 parking spaces proposed. There are four van-accessible handicap spaces, and there's 12 electric vehicle charging stations in the parking spaces. We also have a great pedestrian access here, so we will be taking residents from the main access driveway, main entry, out to Canton Street. There's an existing sidewalk, so we'll be improving that. And we are also proposing a sidewalk along Simpson Street, which doesn't have one currently. And then we have a whole access, accessible walkway along the back of the site. So it forms a loop for residents to use and walk on the walkways and pathways through the site. The utilities, yeah, you can stay on this one. You can stay on the site plan. Sorry. Utilities will come right off of Canton Street and Simpson Street. We're working with the fire department and the water department to provide a looped water system and hydrants where they need it, fire access. We've been working with them on trucks and turning templates. We have a sewer we'll be connecting in Simpson Street. There's an existing sewer manhole down near Memorial Drive. We'll just have to do a short sewer extension. And then to account for all of the new impervious area on site, we'll have subsurface stormwater basins. You won't see them on site. They'll be below grade. We're going to treat the runoff from the paved areas and get them into the ground to recharge groundwater and offset any potential, you know, increase in runoff from impervious surfaces. And lastly, with the site plan is, we have, we're trying to do, we're honor the 50-foot no-touch zone, which is your Conservation Commission's no-touch zone. We're doing that in most cases for the development, but we are cleaning up a lot of those spoil piles and bituminous, which are in that buffer zone. So we will be putting down loman seed after we remove those and revegetating and naturalizing those areas with native species and removing the invasives. We are also meeting the 75-foot nostructure zone, which is also one of the Conservation Commission's offsets from the wetland. And the project, as Barry mentioned, will be before the Conservation Commission for any work that we're doing in the 100-foot buffer zone. So they will have jurisdiction over that area. And to that, I will hand it over to Philippe, and he will tell you about the architecture.
Thank you, Paula, and, well, right. Thank you, Paula, and good evening, everybody. My name is Philippe Saad, and I am representing the Malachayfer. We are the architects for the project. A little bit on the firm, we specialize in senior housing and affordable housing, and we have been working with the client on many of their campuses, so we are very familiar with their, how they like to create community. And if I may say, Kim, you create community first, then it's the building. It's always the community first. And in this project, it's not an exception at all. And if we can go to the next slide, please. I'll take the microphone. Is it okay if I get to the screen? Great. Thank you. So I'm going to take you through, if you were a, if you were a visitor coming to visit a person that lives in the building, like a family member, you would come in through the front door here, you could park on the right or on the left, and then you'll walk on the sidewalk that Paula had talked about, and you'll come in here to the main entrance, which is in between the two, where the two volumes intersect. There'll be a double vestibule as well as a reception, and then we've planned the building in a way that the visitors could definitely see the wetland as soon as they come in. There'll be a living room and a library and a place for people to sit and have a conversation with their loved ones or their family members if they don't want to go upstairs to the apartments. Each one of these wings will have a double set of elevators, so, for accessible reasons. So people will take the elevator up and visit their loved one upstairs in all the units that are fully visitable and accessible through elevators. As well, on the first floor, there will be a fitness room and other management offices for Hebrew Senior Life and the building manager. Something unique that we did in this project is we've located this large orange rectangle up there, which is the multipurpose room, the main room where everybody can gather, right close to the front door of the building, because that's a gesture since day one that Hebrew Senior Life wanted to provide a community room, not only for people who live in the building, but also for the larger community. So if you are, if you have, you're just a community member who lives in Stoughton and are coming here for an event that is happening in the building, you'll come in through here if you're coming through Uber or your personal car, same thing through the front door, and you can go directly to this multipurpose room that would fit somewhere close to 100 to 120 people. So it's a fairly large room that will be open to the community. So it's a fairly large room that will be open to the community as Hebrew Senior Life has always wanted. If we can go to the next. The upstairs become very residential. Everything in blue is one-bedroom units for the residents who will be living in the building. As I, as I said, these floors will be secured. There are two sets of elevators in each wing that will allow people to go up and down comfortably. The rest of the floors, if we can go to the next one, please, are very similar. And if we go to the next one, I think this is when the building starts stepping away from the street and from the wetlands, and the top floor is, in fact, shorter, smaller than the lower floors. And if you can notice that there are two wings, one on the right-hand side and one on the left-hand side, the project is intended to be built in two phases. Phase one will be on the right-hand side, that will come first with the amenities, and then phase two will come in as a second phase. If we can go. So we put some three-dimensional images, conceptual images, of how the building would look from the street. This is if you're standing on the street coming in through the front door. There'll be a sign announcing the community, Hebrew Senior Life, the Stoughton campus. And then, as you can see right under this red volume, is the main entrance. There's a front porch and a covered drop-off area for visitors. I'm sorry, am I blocking the screen? Excuse me. And then here on the left-hand side, I want to point out, this is the community room that will be open to the public and to the Stoughton community for visitors and for larger events. If we can go to the next one. If, if you are west on Canton Street, and this is how the building will appear from the street, right now, there's a lot of vegetation that is blocking this and, and overgrown vegetation, so all that will be taken care of. Next. And then literally, if you are in the wetlands and looking back at the building, these are the two volumes that will be from the backyard of the building. Phase one is on the right-hand side, and phase two is on the left-hand side. Next, please. And if you live in the building, this is a view from the courtyard, literally the backyard of the building. There's outdoor amenities spaces for the residents. There, there are covered porches and pergolas, as well as walking paths that Paula had described previously. Next. And that's, that's a view from the corner. If you're driving Canton, Simpson Street is on the left-hand side. This is really the corner of the building, and remember, as I said, that the building steps down at the corners. The building becomes five stories at the corner of Simpson and, and Canton Street. And I think there was a question that came up early this week when we had the open house. The building is lower than the corner because the first-floor elevation is set lower. Like Paula had mentioned, the, the street slopes down, so the entry point is lower than the intersection, which has made us sink the building into the site, I think, five or six feet below the corner grade. Next. And I think that, that should be the end. Great.
I did just want to, two things, just as Paula mentioned, and I'm not sure if I stated this at the beginning, I think I did, that the, we will also be filing, we filed and had an ANRAD approved with the Conservation Commission, so we'll be filing a notice of intent with the Conservation Commission as well. And I do know Paula mentioned, we will also be filing an approval not required A&R plan with the planning board to create the actual, you know, approximately five-acre lot that's at the corner of Canton Street and Simpson Street, where the building and the amenities will be located. I don't know that we have anyone else right now, right? Okay, okay. So, Mr. Chairman? Okay, great. So what you're seeing up there is basically the outline of, of, of what the A&R parcel will, will look like when, when we file with the planning board. So with that, Mr. Chairman, that completes our primary presentation to the board. Obviously, myself, the members who are here, and the members who are online, including our traffic engineer, are happy to answer any questions that any of the members may have, or any of the folks from the audience may have, or any department staff questions. So thank you very much.
Can you guys hear me? The only question that I have is, when I was reading through the proposal here, it says that HSL intends to request a preference for up to 70% of the units to be leased to local residents at initial occupancy. My question is, is that the max that can be done? Since there's such a shortage of housing in Stoughton for Stoughton residents, if it's possible to increase that number?
That's the maximum that we're allowed to ask.
That's all for me.
I'm gonna reserve a lot of my questions for later as we go through this, but I have a couple brief questions on the presentation tonight, so, starting with the A&R plan. So I'm just curious when you plan on doing that. Will that be after the comprehensive permit is issued?
No, I think the expectation through you, Mr. Chairman, is during the course of going through the hearings with this board, we didn't want to file the A&R until the ANRAD had been approved by the CONCOM, which just happened last week, in case things changed, and we were gonna have to adjust either lot lines or the location of the buildings or any of the amenities. But so we would anticipate, in our likelihood, probably, perhaps even before your next meeting, but certainly before you folks would close the public hearing, would be applying for the approval or the endorsement of the A&R.
So my question goes to, what exactly, which parcel are we talking about for this 40B development? Because the application, and I believe your project eligibility letter was for the entire 14, is it 14 acres, the large piece?
Right.
And I know you referenced also the possibility of a parcel across the street. And I think it's important, for purposes of starting this process, that we really understand what land is involved and what land, I mean, arguably, the land that we have control over right now is everything that's been applied for.
Right.
And within the subsidized, or the project eligibility letter.
So unless Kim corrects me, I believe the intent was that the application is just to cover the property within the A&R parcel, correct?
Deb, Deb is online. Deb, do you want to clarify anything there?
No, I think that, that is correct.
Because we are constrained by the wetlands throughout most of the rest of the site. You know, we've kicked around the idea, could we, you know, down the road, add some amenities or some, somewhere else on the site? But if we, if we were to do that, you know, we would, we would obviously file a revised plan, but for now, the intent is that the, that the project site is going to be the approximately five acres that will be contained within the A&R plan.
Okay, I'd be interested in perhaps town council providing us with some insight onto this, on this as well, because I believe the application right now covers the entire 14 and a half acres. And I think that that's something that would be helpful for the board to look at. It's a very different concept for us if we're talking about 200 units on five-and-a-half acres versus 200 units on 14 and a half acres. It's also very different for us to think about what this project will look like if we have a remaining parcel, several acres, that down the road could get developed differently than if it's tied in with what we're looking at. And then again, as I mentioned, there's an element of another parcel across the street that might be involved in potential parking, or possibly the need for us to look at additional parking somewhere on this site, so. I believe the application before us and the, the project eligibility letter was for the entire large piece, but I'm happy to defer to town council to provide us with better insight into this at some point in time in the process. So that's just an open question that I have, please. And I, I'm gonna reserve the rest of my questions for later.
And just for the record, if everybody can hear me, duly noted, acknowledged, I have your question.
Thank you.
You've seen these letters from the fire chief in the police department?
Yes, we have.
Okay, so, I mean, we haven't read them into the record. At some point, we're gonna do that, so, you know.
Right. And I, if I may, I comment very briefly. Chief Carroll was good enough, after having gotten back from a trip, to submit his, his letter today. I, I would only note that he indicated no objection to the project. He also indicated that the fire department's apparatus, I don't want to put words in it as well, you all have the letter, but can reach a height of 110 feet, so there was, would not an issue with being able to access the upper floors of the project. The police department letter from, I believe he's now Sergeant O'Connor, if, if I remember correctly, addressed, I think, primarily traffic issues in, in the intersection of Simpson and Canton Street, which are also addressed in our traffic report.
So is there a plan to put a light there?
Not at this time.
I'm, I'm finished for now. I'm, I'm sure after the people speak, we'll have a lot more questions.
I think I just want, at this time, I think I just want to follow up on Marguerite's. It doesn't bend. Can you, okay, there we go. No, I think Marguerite brought up an interesting point about the A&R and then like before and after. You know, I was looking through the materials, and there's, you know, a number of variances that are, you know, requested as a result of this application already. I just, I just want to be clear, like, if we're talking about 14-acre lot, these might be the, the variances that are necessary, but if we were to tend down to a five-acre lot, are there any additional variances that would be created, that would need to be reviewed?
Not to my knowledge at this point, but we'll certainly confirm that.
I don't have any other questions now, at this point.
Mr. Chairman, just, if we could just follow up briefly on that, Paula?
Yeah, through the chairman. So in, in your packet, you do have a summary of the variances, as you mentioned, Jeffrey, and this is based on the five-acre parcel. You can see the 239 square foot parcel, so all of the requested waivers are based on
I'll go back to my, my old starting point. Gonna be town water, town storage. I have a little problem with the parking. 59 parking spots seems very short, because I don't know how many people you're gonna have working there. And then some of the people are gonna have cars. I mean, even if they're 70 or 80 years old, they're still gonna be driving. And you have a, well, next Sunday, half Mother's Day, I would hope that the kids would come and visit them, and they're gonna be parked up and down Simpson Street and Canton Street, and that's bad enough as it is. So, Mr. Chairman, if I may, two quick comments on, on that. So, you know, the, the number of parking spaces, that, that is obviously a waiver request because what our bylaw would say is, is two spaces for every one-bedroom unit, which, which would amount to 400 spaces. I don't think anyone thinks that we need that many spaces. But the number was arrived at based on Hebrew Senior Life's experience at their other communities, considering the, the age of, of their residents. We also got information from Colleen Dougherty, the executive director of the Stoughton Housing Authority, regarding our experience with the housing authority at, at our various complexes. So although, you know, the number may appear to be low, it's our belief that it's adequate based on our experiences. Having said that, we do own the property across Simpson Street, at, at the other corner of Simpson and Canton, and we even mentioned this in our, in our waiver request, so that if necessary, if it were the board's determination, whether on its own or through the peer review, that additional parking were needed at the site, we do have the ability to provide additional parking, if, if, if not right on the, the, the site of the building, immediately across the street on Simpson Street, on, on that lot there. And then you answered one question. I didn't get the letter from the fire department, but I was having a problem with the height. And I guess you answered that, but if...
Chief Carroll? I, I have them, I have them because they put them on my desk downstairs.
I know, I know Mr. Roth.
You're supposed to send them out.
Yeah, I know Mr. Roth has it, so I know he can get it to you. Oh, I haven't got that one. And then I had a question on, no, I don't want to try to read that. Oh, that's for me?
Yeah, that's for you, I got mine.
I hate to do that, but can a fire truck get around to the back if they have to?
So we, we have been working with the fire department and their vehicles to make sure that they can get around the site. So they have what we, and you'll see in his letter, actually, he talks about, we can only provide him 150 feet for him to back out of. So just on the south of the building, Bill, there is a double-dashed line that will be a fire department access with stabilized... So they basically have access to three sides of the building, and the requirement is that they have access and they can pull hoses 200...
I recommend that you go up and point, or if you have a, a digital pointer. Some folks don't know what you're talking about.
So the, so the access, you can see, they have access into here, where they would be able to back out, access through here to Simpson Street, and then they have, we have a stabilized turf here. We don't have the material yet exactly what it's going to be, but they can pull in and have access to the back of the building. So they have to be able to access within 250 feet of each point, so they can pull in here and here and have access to the full back of the building.
What's, what's taking a follow-in with, with parking? And the back is all gonna be wetlands. What are we gonna do with snow? Is it gonna come off of site, or you're gonna just push it into the wetlands?
We are not allowed to put it into the wetlands. So no, we have, you'll see green space around the parking areas, where we have landscape, low landscape, that we can pile snow, and the trees are spaced such that it can all be piled on sides. There's actually not parking for the whole length. You'll see that the whole driveway, kind of along Canton Street, there's no parking on that driveway, so the snow can just be plowed to both sides.
Took care of my questions.
Good night.
Can I ask a follow-up question to something you asked? Sure. So you mentioned your other complexes, and I heard Dorchester and Randolph, but I didn't hear the other two locations.
So our affordable housing sites are in Revere, Brookline, Randolph, and Dorchester.
Right, so, other than maybe Randolph, most of them have a lot more access to public transportation, right?
So they do, right. Brookline certainly has access to public transportation, as does Dorchester.
Okay, it's just something I guess I'd ask our traffic consultant, peer reviewer, to take into consideration when we're thinking about that.
We might be able to get that to come up Canton Street, as long as there's enough room, they can come into the complex, pick up people, and go, I would think.
Yeah, I'm talking more about the parking. They said that their parking analysis was based on their other complexes, but if most of their other complexes have a greater access to public transportation, then...
Yeah, we included ours in the analysis. We also included the Stoughton Housing Authority, and then we included some of the other D'Amila Schaefer projects that are in various locations.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask another question? Can I ask another question?
Sure.
When you just had one of those maps up on the screen just a moment ago, and, you know, hearing some of these other questions, I just wanted to maybe take a second look at, or a second pass at, kind of saying, why this five-acre lot in the corner? When you bring up the full 14-acre lot, there seems to be a space that's behind the wetlands that could potentially give more options? Like, why is that not a viable piece?
If you want me to...
I can stand up. So hopefully you can hear me. So we looked at this, we did look at the whole site, we did look at this back, there is a, an access easement through the abutter, so we would need to construct a road through the abutter, and you can see there's no other access points, so you're bringing a development way toward, to the back, and your only access would be Canton Street. So it's a long way to come in, it's a long way to bring sewer, water, all of your other utilities in, so as an affordable project, we really, this site up at the northeast corner just met all of the requirements to limit the initial infrastructure costs. And you can see this, this site here, this is upland, but it is surrounded by wetlands. We have, we would have a small access across from Memorial Drive, but we would be within all of these buffer zones, where you can see, up here, you have a lot more area that is outside the 100-foot buffer zone.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else on the board?
The guys from the town wanted to talk. Bill, did you want to say something?
Gary, Gary, I always like to say something. I'm gonna let, kind of, I want to really kind of talk process right now, as this first meeting is more of an introductory, you obviously did some of the procedural items for the safe harbors. What we would also look at requesting is, is that the board vote that we would look at sending out the traffic for peer review to GPI, they are our consultant. I also, from, you know, looking at the process, from a, from a staff standpoint, Craig and myself typically do site plan reviews, special permits, and those sorts of things. From the staff perspective, we would look at reviewing the engineering, the grading, the drainage, the landscaping, the normal things that we would for site plans, so we wouldn't send those out, because we're fully capable of doing that in-house. The traffic, neither one of us are capable, you know, that's really a specialty. There's one other thing, and as part of a 40B, and I'm sure Ms. Mitchell will probably, is probably on her list, is that the, looking at the financial aspects and the pro forma, we are, you know, I, neither, none of, we have, do not have that in-house expertise, so we would like to look at sending that out. We would work with Attorney Winner's office on getting somebody that can, can look at the financials, because one of the things, you know, with a 40B, they say, oh, if you restrict something, it's not financially feasible, or various things. So that's something that we would look at doing, to make sure that the numbers are correct, and that, you know, those sorts of, there's certain limits that the state has. Craig and I have not done a detailed review of this, because this is kind of the introductory. We plan on taking a much deeper dive and looking at the feasibility, the engineering, the landscaping, the various site things. I will let you know that on the cursory review, from a planning standpoint, I do have concerns with the 59 parking spaces. 400 parking spaces per code, I have concerns with that, too. So I'm hopefully in the future gonna look at proposing, you know, a bylaw change that doesn't require 400 parking spaces, but that requires something that's reasonable. One of the requests that I would have in our initial review is, is that they discuss the property across the street. However, for, I think, the board to review it, and for us to review it, at minimum, we need a preliminary plan. If they don't have it surveyed, they can use the LiDAR data, which is, you know, the engineer can come up with the rough grading, drainage, how many parking spaces, what would it look like, conceptually, what's the setbacks from the existing residences, all of these things. If they're proposing underground drainage, preliminarily, you know, we don't need a full set of construction documents, but if they do propose underground drainage, Craig and I have talked, at minimum, they would need to do some test pits, to just know that it's feasible, like they've done test pits on their current thing. That's one of the big things that Craig and I saw regarding the parking, and I will let Craig kind of talk about some of the overall engineering and issues that he's seen.
Thanks, Bill. As Bill mentioned, you know, we do these types of reviews consistently for the planning board. We don't typically come before the zoning board too often, but we've provided you comments in the past from our department, but we, we plan to take a deep dive into this set of plans. We haven't done so just yet. We wanted to, in our letter, we requested that the board require the applicant to send out the traffic for review by a peer reviewer. We typically use GPI, and hopefully that's agreeable by the applicant as, as the peer review consultant. I agree totally on the, the parking and the possibility of providing additional spaces across the street, and whether or not the board considers them to be required at this point in time, or as the applicant has suggested, in sort of a wait-and-see if what they proposed has worked in the future, is some sort of condition of approval. But it is a bit of a concern that there's such a low parking ratio to me. From what I've seen in the plans so far, you know, the, their typical utility connections, the water, sewer, basically what I see is typically what we see in most site plan reviews. So I didn't see anything alarming with the design of those utility connections, or with the stormwater management from an overall point of view, but we will, you know, get deeper into that, the nuts and bolts of everything, I think probably by the time, the next time we're before you with this.
And also, Mr. Chairman, and procedurally, and I think Mr. Winner can kind of chime in, the way, especially with this, is, you know, you can look at, you know, scheduling out the next hearing and saying, okay, well, at the next hearing, we're gonna be looking at, you know, Craig and Bill, can you really take the deep dive into the site plan and go through all of that? We might not have the traffic back at that point, but, you know, at least we can look at the, the site plan and the issues. You know, the applicant already knows, I've already told them, you know, prior to this meeting, that they, they're gonna have to show us a conceptual parking layout with some grading and drainage. That's, they already know that, you know, we already had that conversation with them. They already know, you know, and if they get it to us, you know, before we get into a deep dive, then that just makes our easier. One of the things that I guess we'll have to talk to our council about is, the project site eligibility letter doesn't include this site. Logistically, how, how does that work? I don't know. So there's some logistics regarding that, so...
Mr. Chairman, could I just follow up very briefly, in terms of, in the, in the past, I've worked with Craig and Mark Tisdale in coordinating the logistics as far as a peer review is concerned, so, so I would anticipate, you know, we would do that, the, but for scheduling purposes, I guess what I want to ask through you, Mr. Chairman, if, Craig, do you have a sense of how long GPI typically takes to do the peer review?
I would say probably four to six weeks.
Okay, so we can, just so we can factor that in, in terms of determining continuances and that sort of thing? Thank, thank you.
Upon directive tonight, you know, we, we would contact GPI immediately, get a cost proposal from them, and get that over to you, set up an escrow and get them working.
Great, thank you.
Just also, as it relates to parking and transportation, as we, as we look at that more deeply and take into consideration, we, we do a lot of work to bring transportation to our communities, so whether it's a van that's dedicated to this community, or one that we share with other communities, making sure that we have the availability of shopping trips, you know, local transportation for our residents that are living there, it also helps when people are on the edge of trying to make that decision about whether they want to keep a car and keep driving or not. So that is something that we typically coordinate and build into our communities to, to help alleviate some of the parking need as well.
I take it that HSL is, is okay with the fact of the peer review and the traffic study?
Yes.
Just wanted to be sure on that.
And, Mr. Chairman, I also request that we send out the, for the financial pro forma.
Oh, the pro forma, yeah. Anybody at the board have any more questions?
I just, I believe we have to make a motion for that officially. Is that what you're looking for? So I'll make a motion that we send out a, for peer review, the traffic study, and also the pro forma for a financial peer review, to a consultant of the town staff's choosing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And I, I just, to be official, too, I agree with you, Bill, that the question about how does that site across the street, if that is something we have to, we decide to take into consideration, how does that impact the project eligibility letter? In, in my other area of life, when I've dealt with something like this, sometimes we've had to get amendments to a project eligibility letter. Back then, it was DHCD, but I think they're pretty flexible around that, if that's something you decide to try to be proactive about.
I know we asked you for peer review and pro forma and traffic. Would HSL be willing to put in a crosswalk with the, with the button lights, so that the kids can come across, because they do walk across there pretty all the time?
Mr. Chairman, I believe that anything dealing with the traffic and transportation, whether there's a traffic light, pedestrian crosswalks, would be all, that would all come out of the traffic study and the recommendations from the traffic engineer.
Okay.
So I think requesting certain design elements at this time, such as that, is really premature. So, and it stands to reason that those, those types of things, we commonly, in, in our planning board, site plan stuff, those are required all the time, so, but they do come out of the transportation review. But we will, Craig and I will note that that is a desire of the board for safety and those sorts of things.
I'd use the words of the old fire chief, Mr. Crimmins might remember this, but, "For the safety of the children."
I was just gonna say what Bill just said, though I think, I think the time to address any of those specifics would be after the traffic peer review was done. Could I just ask, Mr. Chairman, and whether, whether Attorney Winner could respond? We're certainly familiar with peer review for traffic, not as familiar with peer review for the pro forma, so I'm just trying to get a sense of what the board envisions of that encompassing.
Mr. Chairman, if that question is through you to me, I'm happy to respond.
What'd he say?
I think Attorney Winner's just looking for indication that you would like him to respond to that question.
Sure.
Yes, and I'm sorry if...
Brian, bring your mic up just a little bit.
Yeah, hold on, I was holding it before, I'll hold it again. So a couple of things on that. So the regulations provide a procedure, if the board wishes to have the pro forma reviewed, and one of those requirements is that it be done after the other consultant reviews have been completed, and the board discusses, discusses conditions with the applicant, and if the applicant then states that they're objecting to any of those conditions because they're uneconomic, or would render the project uneconomic, then we have an opportunity to invoke that. It's unusual right off the bat to jump into the pro forma until that's put into play under the procedure, so it's not off the table, I'm not suggesting it is, but that's something that we may want to get into after we've done, you know, the civil review, the traffic review, et cetera, and gone through those issues, and we start discussing the financial feasibility of conditions you might want to see. So I'm happy to discuss that with your planner, and sort of tee it up, so we're ready for it when we come back to it, but I would suggest that you put that, you know, a little bit further down in your sort of procedural agenda, if you will, so that we can address it if necessary, once we get through, you know, the different peer review items. And then the actual process of doing that is really no different, if we get to that, is really not that different than any other 53G consultant process. You know, we'll follow the formalities of the regulations, and when we get to that step, we will ask them for their, their pro forma, and they have an obligation to provide it in a form satisfactory to their subsidizing agency, and then we get a chance to have it peer reviewed, and it's to test whether or not our conditions truly render the project uneconomic. And so we don't really know if that's in play until we get to that question. And so when we go through the peer reviews, we know and identify some of the issues, we've had a chance to interact with the applicant, and we start discussing what kind of conditions might be appropriate to address some of those issues, that's when we get to that question. So we'll, we'll tee it up, and we'll be ready to address it when the board gets to that stage of its public hearing, but I think for now, it may be best to take that under advisement.
Did he answer you?
Yes, thank you, Brian. So I think, if I may, perhaps, if Marguerite wants to amend...
Amend the motion?
Amend her motion, because I don't think you voted on it yet anyways, right?
I think we voted on it, but...
We did vote on it.
Oh, you did?
Yeah, I, I still would want to do, I don't think I need to amend my, my motion, we can certainly have this ready to go and identify somebody. I mean, I think there's some other elements here that come into play because of what has been presented in the application, and the, the history of ownership to this property, and then some of the land acquisition elements that are being shown on the pro forma. So I think there's, there's more involved here than just simply what Attorney Winner was saying, where, you know, we might have a condition that we're arguing over, whether it makes it uneconomic or not, the general idea that perhaps... The general idea that perhaps what's being shown on the initial piece of the pro forma around land acquisition may not reflect exactly what it should, or maybe it does, would be a really helpful thing for this board to know, and I'm not sure there's anyone in town who can provide that information to us yet. So I think it would be helpful to have somebody lined up if we need to get to that point. We may not, but it would be a useful thing, and it is a open question that I had. I have about four pages of notes on that in my review.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, I don't think the motion needs to be amended either because authorizing us to, to investigate and pursue that is, is just fine. We're happy to tee that up and we should tee that up.
Okay.
We're, we're fine with that, Mr. Chairman?
I'm sorry, oh, you're fine with it, okay. Anybody in the audience want to ask any? Well, unfortunately, I don't know any of your names, but Mr. Ventresco, I'll give you.
If you would, Mr. Chairman, if you could just ask folks to identify themselves by name and address so we, we can keep a record, and I'm sure the board wants to keep a record as well.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board. My name is Peter Ventresco, I live in the far end of Canton Street, heading west. And I'd like to give a little history of this piece of property. Originally the owner was Mr. Fedlitsky. He was a banker and a financier. And when I was a kid in the 40s, before Werewell too, he ran a dairy farm there, and he auctioned all his dairy cows off, and then he went into raising beef cattle. And he was a gentleman farmer, and that 25 acre site was all pasture land, hay fields that he mowed every year. Okay, and then, I guess by 1971, he donated the land to, okay, the Hebrew Rehabilitation Aged, that was the name of the company, I don't know if he was bought this property from them, but okay. Now the new owners is the Hebrew Life Center. Was there any restrictions on the property in the land court? On, to what the land could be used for? Because he was a gentleman farmer, I'm sure he wanted that land to be kept as it's a natural state.
Mr. Chairman, do you want me to respond to Mr. Ventresco's question?
Sure, I don't know what he asked.
You don't know what I asked? I'll ask him, I'll tell you.
I know what he asked, I just wasn't sure if we wanted to do, you know, one at a time or.
No, no, you're talking to us, but yes, you can answer his question.
Right, right. And I have not done a title of the property. It sounds like what Mr. Ventresco might be referring to is whether or not it's under Chapter 61 agricultural exemption, I think that would have, long since have, have expired as far as Mr. Lipsky's use of the property as farmland. Since my client has owned the property, it's just, you know, there has been no quote-unquote "use" of the property, it's just, it's, but in terms of any other restrictions of record, you know, I haven't done a title, so I'm not aware of what, if any, there may be.
Well, as years back as a young person, I remember the town, everybody at the town was talking about, he did that, leased out land in its natural habitat. But all right, now, Stoughton Senior Housing Count, at the first meeting at the Town Hall, one of the young ladies on that screen said there was 5,000 on the waiting list. And at the next night at the meeting, they said it was 3,000. Well, that number is not Stoughton residents, it's people from all over the state, all over the country. So out of that number, let's just say it's a loan number 3,000, how many people on that list are actually Stoughton residents?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, I don't have an answer to that question at this time.
Well, I ask that question because it's probably going to be a small pool, and they're going to pick a small amount out of that pool because they only have 200 units. So there might be 10 units for Stoughton residents. And then they get in there, and then five or 10 years, they move, and then it goes back into the lottery again, and it's not handpicked, it's picked by the computer. So they can, the odds are against people from Stoughton getting in there again because you've got thousands of people from all over the country that are going to end up in there and not Stoughton people. So in five, 10 years, it's probably nobody in Stoughton are going to live there. And, okay. Okay, well, five, geez, I'm jumping ahead of myself. And the main thing that nobody's brought up here, I was involved with a group of people called the Stoughton Citizens Association. We were involved with all the contamination that was Stoughton, with five different companies that contributed to the contamination, contamination, that covered all of Lipsky's field, some had come out of Gil Machine, and it went all the way down onto West Street and almost into the water supply. Now, the contamination from Brookfield Engineering Hazard Industrial Chemicals flowed down Canton Street and contaminated five homes. They were real bad, that Brookfield had to buy three of the homes and tear them down to get the people out of there. And, okay, and then the only way they could, and, and one of the houses, before they tore down, they took the first floor out, and they put machines and filters in there to try to pull the plume back from Lipsky's field on the other side of Canton Street. And they started pulling it, but it wasn't enough. So they purified the water, and they pumped it up to Simpson Street into the drain and back down to Steep Hill Brook. So that, they were having trouble doing that, so what they did was, they pumped chemicals into the ground on the Field Brook site, they built a barrier dam to contain the hazard material on site. Now sooner or later, someday, that barrier is going to leak, and them hazardous contaminations are still there, high counts, and they're going to end up flowing south downhill to Canton Street and to Lipsky's field and into this rehabilitation zone. And then the whole thing will start all over. So then what do we do then? If, if this happens, now you've got the Hebrew set up for seniors, and they could be sitting on future contaminated ground in the future. And then the whole process has to start all over to try to decontaminate everything. Now, the other thing I learned tonight was, all the meetings I went to, they only talk about five acres, like there was no other land to build on. Now we find out we've got 14 acres. Well, I would have no problems if these were two floors high, stories high, and they used the other rest of this acreage and moved these other buildings, two, two-story buildings all over this property, and that would take that city look away from Canton Street. And there's plenty of storage for them to hook into, because at the end of their property, Steep Hill Brook runs through it, and the long Steep Hill Brook is the MDC truck line sewer, all the store sewer ends up going into that sewer, and it goes all the way up to the deposit. So I seriously think you should really consider making these people cut it down from six stories to two and utilize the rest of the 14 acres to make up that difference. All right, thank you very much.
Linda Gerton, Merrill Street in Stoughton, is this plan?
Excuse me, excuse me, can you tell, say your name again and your address? Your name and your address?
25 Merrill Street.
Okay.
Is this plan contingent on town meeting approving the CPC funds?
Yes.
So if the CPC funds are not approved, this is all done?
I don't know if it's all done, I don't know what it will mean for the project, but we do need to have town support to get state support, to get funding for the project.
If I, if I may through you, Mr. Chairman, this application before this board is not contingent upon CPC, or town meeting approval for the CPC article, but as, as Kim mentioned, for the overall viability of the project, we need both, as I said during my opening remarks, we need both the approval of this board for the comprehensive permit, as well as the approval for town meeting for the CPC funding.
So you're looking for town residents to pay?
One is not contingent upon the other.
So you're looking for town residents to pay $2 million towards this project? Two and a half million?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, we, we applied to the CPC under its housing fund for $2.3 million, which the CPC voted unanimously to recommend to town meeting, so it'll be up to town meeting to, to vote on that when it comes up on the floor of town meeting.
Well, I'm against this whole thing. And I hope if there are any town meeting reps there, to please vote against this. Thank you.
Good evening, thank you for letting me speak. Arnie Feinberg, town rep, Precinct 6, 250 Powell Street, Stoughton, Massachusetts. This is questions directed to the COO.
You're talking to the board.
Oh, I'm sorry. Can Section 8 or MVP voucher holders become residents of this building?
Are you okay with this?
I'll leave that up to you, because I don't know the answer to that.
Yes, there will be a mix of vouchers, this is affordable housing, so there will be a mix of vouchers that people can access to have a subsidy so that they can live here affordably.
Okay, then that means that illegal aliens will be allowed to live in there? MVP is vouchers for non-citizen or non-immigrant status people. Section 8 covers part of that. It's, that particular vouchers are mentioned on page 351 of Book 2 warrants, line 8, and discusses that. Now, if you look into the law firm that is trying to get these people in, there is a article that they stated, how to tactics of getting non-resident, non-immigrant status residents into housing projects like this, and that's covered by Section 8 and MVP. Next is, looking at that site plan, it doesn't look like you're going to be able to get a ladder in there, a fire truck with ladders. When you extend out the beams to stabilize it, it's going to be sitting on earth, and that fire truck could just roll over. Can you address that?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, I think the fire chief addressed that, addressed that issue in his letter to the board.
Did he cover the ladder going in the back of the building?
He did, through you, Mr. Chairman.
Second, I don't know if anybody, third rather, I don't know if anybody remembers 2010, 2011, when we had a lot of flooding here, a massive rainstorm for a week. I didn't see anything up there about flood planes. What does the 100-year flood plane look like? And what does a 1,000-year flood plane look like? Will that building be put underwater?
There are flood planes located on that property. That will be part of the, the ANRAD, the ANRAD process through the Conservation Commission, all the resource areas have been identified on that plan that's before them currently. And I believe all of the proposed development is outside of those resource areas.
Thank you very much for giving me some time.
Hello, Dylan Riley, 88 Basick Circle, Stoughton resident, Union Carpenter. Just had a few questions. I enjoyed the presentation. There's a couple of things I wanted to note that I really liked that you mentioned. You noted stepping up and doing the right thing in the needs of Stoughton residents. I can say that the needs of Stoughton residents are to be paid fairly and to make sure that this building is constructed, abiding by every law. So I just would like to look for a commitment now from, from HLS, that the building be constructed using contractors with no history of employee misclassification or hiring subcontractors with any history of employee misclassification, like they did in Brookline.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, I'm not sure what the gentleman is asking for.
I'm asking if you will commit to not hiring contractors with a history of employee misclassification, or contractors with a history of hiring subcontractors who have a history of employee misclassification. To think if you're taking tax.
I, I don't think we can put restrictions on that to start with.
Even though they're getting taxpayer money to do so?
Even though they're getting taxpayer money.
Okay, well, I also have some thoughts on the parking spaces there, I think we all do. I don't think 59 spaces is enough for 200 units. What if, on Christmas, on New Year's, on Mother's Day, when everybody comes to visit these people, we're not, this isn't Brookline, this isn't Revere, this isn't Everett, this isn't Dorchester, there's not easy public access to transportation. How are they going to fit enough people to, enough parking spaces to get everybody who would want to visit their relatives? How, are they even going to have enough parking spaces for the people who are going to want to live here? I don't know, maybe we start to think about downsizing this, maybe 100 units or so? Yeah, I mean, also, how are the deliveries going to even get in there? If a quarter of the units have a delivery once a day, they're not going to be able to find anywhere to park. I mean, it seems like too, if we're getting, giving taxpayer money to build this building, and they're only using five acres of it, I don't know, maybe the, some of the other land that's usable but has an easement should be a park or donated.
It's not, not up to us as to what they build.
Oh, okay.
Yes, my name's Cameron Clip, 50 Pratt's Court, 53 Pratt's Court, also a town meeting rep. I have some concerns. I happened to work at the federal level for six years in housing, and I happen to know that the standard practice of the state and the federal employees are to tell people looking for housing, put multiple, multiple applications out, and throughout the state. So I know firsthand that that list is not true, and I would like the Housing Authority, before town meeting, this is seen by town meeting, is to come back with a true list of how many Stoughton residents are on that list and omit anybody else, so that our town meeting reps have a true picture of what our need is. Second, I was also involved with the EPA. I was one of the people, I called EPA and the DEP when I worked at Joe Mocley's office. I would like to see a clean bill of health from those two agencies on that land. I've been keeping an eye on it, especially after raining, and I do see a lot of contaminants still there. You can see the, the residue in the, in the water down there along Central Street, and I do walk that land quite a bit. There was, there were people that used that land that we're not talking about. McNamara has a disposable company, and he used that land for a number of years, and he cleaned his, his trucks there. So I happen to know that that stuff doesn't dissipate very soon. I think we should have the EPA and the DEP come back out and look at that land before we approve any building there. And why can't we ask them to please reduce it to the size of Randolph's facility? It would fit much nicer on that land if they get the approval to do it. So reducing the scope of it, they already have a facility in Randolph that is two stories, and six stories is just too much for us, we're not a city. Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
My name is Edward D. Felice. Live at 200 Ethelway, Stoughton, Mass.
Hey, we have a meeting going on.
I was wondering if we could bring up that site plan again? There's a question I want to ask about that. There was one that showed what was going on on the downside toward the swamp. But it was the land area. I guess I asked the right, okay. Now, when I look at that on the left side, just out of that line, are those houses there? Right there? Are those houses? So you're telling us that they're downhill, obviously, from the project. And what about those people? What are they going to be looking at? A 6-3 building? And you're not going to be able to hide it from that viewpoint. Something to think about. I don't live there, but I would feel bad if people had to do that, have to look at that. The other thing I wanted to address, too, again, getting back to the parking. I was at the, I was at the meeting earlier in the week, and the first thing that stuck out to me was the 45 spaces. So prior to coming to the meeting, as you know, I live adjacent to West Stoughton Village, which was built by John Keith in the early 70s. So I made a quick look before I came up, and I noticed that they were 98, and you guys know what West Stoughton Village looks like, right? 98 parking spaces, including handicap spaces. Also, on the entrance, one of the entrances is Christian Drive, which is the entrance near the clubhouse. There are 13 cars that park along that street. And there are, I think, all the buildings, I know, all the buildings are basically two-story. I think there's maybe nine buildings. So I can't possibly see, and I didn't think that earlier, but this kind of proves to me that that number is crazy, that 59, that is crazy. And maybe these folks of the board should take a walk around West Stoughton Village. And you can count the spaces yourself. I didn't get home from my job early enough to talk to the lady there that John's person there, secretary, whatever, as to how many units they have there. That I don't know. But again, I think that might be a good comparison on this thing that I think a lot of people have spoken about, concern for the parking spaces there. And... I have trouble with my notes here, sorry. Yeah, some of this we already talked about. So I think, you know, in this, when this project was first talked about about years ago, myself and Peter, we've been proponents for elderly housing for a long, long time. So I first read about this, I said, man, this is great, I want to get involved in this thing. But there's an old saying, the devil's in the details. And when I saw the pictures of a 6-3 building right smack in a residential area, I mean, give me a break. If it was up near the square or something like that, you know, fine, we do have some tall buildings here, but, I mean, to me, this is ridiculous. And as you all know, I have pushed for elderly housing in the past, but I don't think this is going to work. And I think, you know, the town should take a good look at it. The other thing I had mentioned earlier last week, last Monday, the, I would suggest that the entrance that's on Canton Street should be reconsidered. We all know what the traffic is like over there, and you're going to put a major intersection there. So my thought was that the major entrance should be off of Simpson Street. In so doing, take care of that intersection of Simpson and Canton. We all know that's a pretty tough intersection to maneuver, and that would, if this goes through, I think that would be the best way to get people out of there safely, have a light there, and it'll also improve a dangerous intersection. I guess that's all I have to say, but I'm really disappointed when all these details came up, because I really thought we were going to get some, finally get some housing for seniors, and I don't think this is going to work. Thank you.
Can you hear me? Okay. Lisa Lyons, Precinct 2. So I just really, there's so many issues to talk about here. I first want to talk about the taxpayers in this town, okay? When we use the word subsidize or grants, we have to realize this is also taxpayer monies. So we are asking Stoughton residents to take it on both ends, from the state, their state taxes, as well as their local taxes through the CPC. This is unacceptable. I also want to, to Peter's, and I think it's Joe D. Felice, I'm not sure, his, Ed D. Felice, sorry, to their point, that I also care about our seniors very much in this town, and would love to see market-rate ownership housing for our seniors. I heard our presenters say that they have other properties that are for market, and I'm devastated for our seniors that they didn't think Stoughton was good enough to have, to give our seniors market-rate ownership housing in Stoughton. So I'm disappointed on that. On another front, I'm going to agree with the previous speakers with regard to how big six stories on a monstrosity, and I'm also objecting to presenters coming to Town Meeting or public meetings without fully vetted areas. For example, the traffic review is not done. So to have our, us as Town Meeting reps, which I am one, vote on these without fully vetted areas. We want to be voting on a full project, all the implications for the taxpayers of this town. I'll leave it there to give other people a chance to speak right now, but I am thoroughly against this project. And I also want to just say one thing, I also forgot, I want to, to a previous speaker's point, with regard to the MRVP, Massachusetts Rental Voucher Programs. Apartments, I want ownership because it elevates a town. I don't want to further depress the town of Stoughton. I want to keep Stoughton as a humble town that it is. I do not want to see it turn into a city. Thank you for your time, everyone.
Marina Ryans, I'm Precinct 7. So I do have a few concerns about this project. Number one is six stories building for the senior citizens is unacceptable. There are always a lot of issues with no electricity, elevators shut down, any other issues, how you expect senior citizens with a lot of different health issues and disabilities to run to the rescue? It's impossible. So I know a lot of citizens, and my mother lives in one of your buildings in Brookline, I'll tell you for sure, they're all trapped. So it's a safety, serious safety situation with two elevators, with so many stairs, it's absolutely impossible. So number two, so I know we talked about parking, so I want to see how big, not the parking areas, I mean, parking spots, but parking areas. I'll tell you during the day, and I've had a lot of issues, it's one ambulance after another, there are a lot of transportation, there are buses, there are visitors, nurses, physical therapists, a lot is going on during the day. And I'll tell you, we would line up and wait until we even get to the front entrance. So I'm telling you right now, this building, six stories, is absolutely no from me. I know how many issues Brookline has, I know for sure, I'm voting no, absolutely no.
Hi, Debbie Menz, 64 Simpson Street. Where to begin on this? The traffic is ridiculous. So even if you were to move the entrance or egress to the Simpson Street side, that's a tiny street, we know you'll have to put lights in to even make that possible. If, we need to know the number of Stoughton residents that are on this waitlist to get in. Number one, we all want senior housing. So how many? How many in Stoughton? And we're going to rely on the state to decide if our Stoughton residents get preference? I know you're going to put in for it, but, so what do we do? We cross our fingers and hope they say, oh, yeah, okay, we're going to give whatever. And then what's, what's, what's the percentage? You know, if we have 1,000 seniors, how many of our Stoughton people are going to get in there? We want to take care of our seniors. I'm not sure that this project is, is going to take care of our Stoughton people. And we're giving $2.3 million of our taxpayer money towards it. Let's take care of our own. Thank you.
Paul Beliveau, Precinct 3. Just a couple of questions on the parking. Could we, could we get, Mr. Chairman, could you request that they provide the parking ratio for the Randolph setting? That's kind of similar to what we're having here. And they mentioned the, the comment about a community center. If there is a community center, is that something that is just for the people that are in there, or is it something that they're extending out to the public of Stoughton? And in that case, how many people would be, could fit into a community center, and how many parking spaces would you need to accommodate people outside of the, living there, coming to this community center? One other question I would ask is that, the traffic study, I'm not sure if it includes, but maybe you could request that it include pedestrian traffic, because that is a area that we have major school facilities at, and there's a lot of sports and stuff going on. So there is an incredible amount of pedestrian traffic in that area. And then one last thing is, in your meetings, do you have like a time limit as to how much people can speak and how many questions they can ask?
He asked if we have a limit on a number of questions or a number of minutes.
You just reached it, Mr. Beliveau.
Ruth Gamble, 25 Crescent Avenue. I have a question about the traffic study also. I want to propose to the town that we include Cushing Street, all of Simpson Street, all the way up to Central, down Canton also. The morning, in the morning, school time, 7:00 to 8:00 o'clock, you're talking over 100 cars coming in and out of there. You're talking probably 20 buses coming in and out of there. Same thing in the afternoon, 2:30-ish, you're talking an hour of traffic there. We have Suburban Electronics, who's been electric company there, who's been parking on both sides of that street. Again, there are no sidewalks there. You have students who are coming across, going to the middle school. So please, if during that study, you can incorporate those other streets also.
Yeah, my name is Alvons Papadou. I live on 88 South Worth Court, and my picture is on the map over there where we live right now. I've been around this town for 80-plus years, and I used to work at Lipskey's Farm at one day. At one period of time, when I was younger, we used to have a pool where the cows fed, and we used to go swimming, and this, the wetlands shows not where this piece of water was. It was probably right in the middle of one of your wings of your building. So I'm just questioning whether you start digging and excavating, you're going to end up with a spring-fed lake right in the middle of your property. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Tom Porter, 325 Simpson Street. I would just like to point out again, Simpson Street, the amount of traffic, people coming down Central Street and taking a left on Simpson, and Simpson's already bad enough. And also with the parking, you got to remember, too, is they said 45, 49 parking spots, 12 are electric, and I believe it's going to be handicapped, so now there's even less parking spots.
This is a preliminary. This is preliminary. You're going to have another term, talk, be able to talk.
What's the wish of the board?
Oh, no, obviously, we got to continue the hearing. Obviously, we got to continue the hearing, because we got to get the traffic peer review in the, you say in six weeks?
Yeah, I think probably, well, if we could have a little discussion about this, perhaps. I'm having trouble hearing with folks behind me. Bill raised a good point that perhaps while the traffic peer review is taking place, we could be addressing some of the site-related issues. So if that's the case, we could probably look at pushing this, continuing the hearing probably about a month. Craig, I'll defer to you as far as, it probably doesn't make sense to do it until you've had a chance to complete your review and prepare your technical review memo, because we probably wouldn't have much more to talk about at that point until you've done that.
I think internally, from our standpoint, a month's time to do the technical review is sufficient.
Okay.
Yeah, and so based on the calendar, a month is June 6th, but we have to have everything a week prior, so I'm thinking, and there's an item on the June 6th calendar.
Yeah, no, probably the second meeting in June would make more sense. Give us a little extra time built in there.
So it would be the June 20th.
Yeah, if you can bear with me one second. June 20th, so, and I think the expectation, as Craig just said, between he and Bill, to hopefully have their review done, along with the technical review memo that they typically The, I don't, perhaps the traffic peer review might be done by then, but if not, obviously, and I think, Billy, your suggestion had been anyways, probably dedicate the next meeting to the, so the site review process.
That would, more of the... That would, more of the site plan, those sorts of issues, yes.
And we can also, between now and then, address some of the other issues that came up, the issues that Marguerite raised about the A&R plan, and any amendment we may need to the project eligibility letter as a result of that, and probably start the process of looking at that site across the street with some sort of a conceptual plan to provide additional parking at that site. So I think the, at least from our perspective, the idea would be at that June 20th meeting to address those issues and whatever issues may come up during Craig and Bill's review.
Sure, I'm pointing information, please.
What?
I'll point it.
We all took part of interest.
Pointing information.
On June 20th. Do you have anything else on that?
No, there's nothing on that.
Okay, so it'd be June 20th at 7:30. Go ahead. Here.
There's something I, it's on. There's something I don't get on this whole thing. These folks are going to the town meeting in a matter of days, and as you can see from the questions, we don't know what is going on. How does that, how do you do that? You mean, you should have made all your decisions before going to town meeting. So my point of information is, how is it working this way? I don't understand that. Do you?
Well, we can grant them a special permit or reject it.
Do you want me to answer that for you?
Yeah, but I mean, there's time, like you said, you're already setting up times, we have to, additional meetings. I would think that this stuff here should have been done like six months ago, prior to town meeting, but I just don't understand how we're doing it.
That, go ahead.
Let me answer this, because they kind of answered it. They're seeking funding from Town Meeting. That's a separate process than this. If Town Meeting denies this, they can still move forward with this. They may change it somewhat. They would ultimately, in order to open up some of the fundings, in order to open up some of the funding sources, they would still probably have to come back to the town in the future, because in order to, you still have to have a municipal share, but it doesn't have to be 2 million. I mean, it could be any number. So if Town Meeting denies the request, they can continue with this, modify their application, and then, you know, figure out how they want to proceed. So they're kind of, while they are tied, you know, they can make the decision, it's a financial decision for them, whether they're going to move forward. I think that's the way they explained it earlier.
Okay. I'll make a motion, we continue the hearing to June 20th at 7:30.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Don't you get off the board.
Barry, the project eligibility letter amendment, I'm suggesting you also potentially consider that lot across the street, so you don't have to go back twice.
No.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Oh, really?
What's that?
You want to do the minutes, or do you want to wait until the next one?
I can get another one tomorrow.
Okay. I have, I've read them, so I'm ready on the minutes.
Actually, you want to go through these? Let's see if you can follow these.
I don't have anything but this. I've probably got none of them.
You can have them. I'll just have, I'll just have a copy.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I don't have any of these. Look at this.
No, she said she was, you know.
I think she emailed them to us, but she said it was going to be here. Like, for all I know, there's a folder with all of it.
Just this morning.
I just didn't bother to print it out. So, yeah, Sherem, I'm ready to do the minutes if you want to. Trish, did you make that one, or do you know if that one changed? Okay, then I'm fine.
Why, you want to do them?
Did you want to do these?
We can. I've reviewed them all, and I think the one change I asked for is already made. Yeah.
I think the first one is October.
Motion to accept the minutes from October 19th.
So I just want to make sure there's one I wasn't on, and I don't know which day it was.
18. Oh, that's 18. Yeah, you were on that.
Okay, I'll second.
Motion made in seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion to accept the minutes from January 18th. You were there.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yes, you were there.
Second.
Was there? The motion, all in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
And motion to accept the meeting minutes from February 15th.
I know I wasn't.
We were not there.
No.
Second.
Jeffrey seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
I abstain.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Wait, did we vote to adjourn?
Did you call for the German vote? Aye.
Make a motion to, oh, no.
We already motioned.
Want to make a motion to adjourn?
We already did.
Second, second, second.
Made in seconded. All favor? Aye.
Aye.
Who wants to lose it?